Good evening, everyone. Members of council, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and generatia thereof? Counselor Dunn.
Through you, your worship. I don't have any pecuniary interests of this meeting, but of the previous meeting on June, yeah, June 11th, I had a pecuniary interest regarding 10-3 report PLA-13-18 dated April 25th, 2018, and I had a pecuniary interest regarding 10-5 report SI-06-18 dated May 31st, 2018 because of property ownership.
Okay. Not sure that, I mean, you declared that at that time, but did you?
No, I wasn't here.
You weren't there?
I wasn't at that meeting. I was only in the closed session. I was not, because of my medical reasons, I couldn't be out here.
Oh, right, right, right.
So I wanted to make sure I declared that, and it was...
So noted.
The clerk advised me that I make sure, even if I'm not there, that I declare the pecuniary interest.
Very good. Okay. So noted. Anything else from council? If not, then we will move on to the approval of council minutes. Oops. Where'd I go? Skip to page. Special closed meeting held June 11th, looking for a mover and seconder, Counselor Verbeke, Counselor Wilkinson, discussion on that motion, all in favor, and carried. And then the same thing for the minutes of the council meeting held June 11th. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Hammond, discussion on that motion, all in favor, and carried. Is there any business arising out of those minutes? I see none, so they'll move on to public meetings. We have a public meeting in drainage this evening. Mr. Botham taking us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you have a look at Figure 1 in the report, the property we're looking at has the red dot on it on the southwest corner of Highway 77 and Mercy Road 8. So administration received a request from the owner of 636 Mercy Road 8 on January 18, 2018, to relocate an existing access culvert from their proposed development. That's because the Ministry of Transportation advised the landowner that the existing access culvert needed to be moved as far west on the property as was possible. So the engineer from Baird AE, and actually Halliday Pearson from Baird AE is here tonight if you have any questions on this report. She's provided her report, and the existing 1,200-millimeter diameter pipe that was recently installed under a previous engineer's report is illegal access on the municipal drain, and it's proposed that we simply move that access farther west, trying to reuse as much of the material as possible, the pipe and the head walls and the granular material. So we've already received a deposit in the amount of $5,000 from the owner for the engineering cost, and once the project is tendered and prior to construction, the owner will provide a second deposit for the total construction cost. This project wasn't included in the 2018 budget, however, all the costs will be assessed to the landowner, and the latest estimate of total project cost is $26,880.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor thanks through to you, Alan. So I guess we have to have another engineer study because the previous engineer's study was okay to put the drain where it was, but now it's not? Like, are they gonna keep, can they change this whenever they want? M-O-M-T-O, or is it, it's not municipality at all, right?
As I understand it, the development in this, on this property caused the MTO to look at the situation now in 2018, and they are required to push the driveway as far west away from the Highway 77 corridor. So we're simply moving a culvert that was installed closer to the corner farther to the west.
But it's MTO, not the town's fault.
It's an MTO requirement.
Thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Alan, my question is just, on this map, where, is there any indication where the actual culvert's going to?
It's not on this map, but it's in the report that was provided under separate cover.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So council's wishes on this, then? Oh, I'm sorry. Public meeting. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address council on this matter, I invite you to step forward. Nobody? So, council's wishes, moved by Counselor Verbeke, support by the deputy mayor, discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries. The next item we have in public meeting is another drainage issue, and Alan, I assume you're taking us through this one as well.
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Mayor. So we're looking at Lebo Creek Northwest Branch, a new access culvert and a berm at 635 Mercy Road 7, and you can see that property is depicted in Figure 1 of the report. It's the property with the red dot again on it. Administration received a request from the owner of 635 Mercy Road 7 on April 7, 2017, to install a new access culvert for a proposed greenhouse development at that same address, 635 Mercy Road 7. The property currently has one entrance that was too small to accommodate development activities and the, to accommodate the location of proposed stormwater management ponds and the greenhouse development itself. So again, Halliday Pearson from Baird AE has provided her report, and in that report it includes a new 1,500-millimeter diameter pipe, engineered plain concrete block head walls, and it also establishes a berm along the west property limit. You can see, if you look closely on that property, on the west side, there's a small blue line that depicts a drain in the area. So they're proposing a berm along that drain as some protection, some flood protection. We're also proposing that the existing, or the engineer, sorry, is proposing that the existing 1,000-millimeter diameter culvert should remain in place, and the top should be lowered approximately 0.6 meters, again, to satisfy a stormwater management requirement for the development. It's important to note that the secondary access, the 1,500-millimeter diameter access, the new one, is a secondary access for that property, and it's not eligible for a grant under the OMAFRA ADIP program. Given the installation of the access culvert was necessary for the construction of this greenhouse development to proceed, the project was not tendered but awarded directly to Swatzke Excavating, and that was at the owner's request. And further, the owner did acknowledge that the engineer's report may not be approved by council, and that the said access would therefore have to be removed at their expense should that occur. We did receive a deposit in the amount of $10,500 for engineering for the project, and we expect, we also received $61,500 for the construction of the access, the construction of the berm, and the lowering of the existing culvert. The total project cost, the latest total project cost estimate is $78,355. Again, this was not included in the 2018 budget, but 100% of the cost will be charged to the landowner.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Alan, on here where someone awards without tendering, is there any repercussions that come back to us, or like, I know you say if it wasn't installed properly that they would have to redo it again, but do we do the tendering, or does, like, on a project like this, or does the owner have the, I guess, the right just to go ahead and get whoever he wants to do it? As long as they meet our specs, of course.
Well, typically through the Drainage Act, it's the responsibility of the municipality to tender for the work, to get the work done, and it's our purchasing policy that we typically tender for these works. So that's why we typically follow that process. In this case, the owner's paying 100% of the cost, and he's ready to assign it to someone. So to keep the development moving, we elected to go this way.
Okay. Deputy Mayor? Well, I've gotta go. Public meeting still, so, yep. So again, public meeting, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council on this matter? If not, deputy mayor moves the recommendation, support by Counselor Hammond. Question? Counselor Verbeke?
Since the bridge is already in place, I hope it's met MTO's approval, that it doesn't have to be moved, because it's not that close, but, and I'm assuming now that they're not allowed to use any of the other existing exits onto 77?
The culvert's being constructed and being inspected, well, it's being constructed by a contractor, but we are on site to inspect it, and MTO has seen site plans that include this culvert, they have approved it, and I believe as part of the MTO permitting process, the accesses from 77 directly to the parcel are being closed.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I think it's, it's great that we can move things ahead when it says administration worked with the owner, you know, to help facilitate this. That's the direction that we want to head in all projects like this if we can, so, good job.
No further questions. I'll call the vote, all in favor of the recommendation, then, and motion carries. Next item up is reports from staff and delegation. The first one is one regarding the Leamington Business Leadership Forum, and Mr. Cox, I believe?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. The purpose of my report tonight is to seek council's approval for the creation of the Leamington Business Leadership Forum, which is proposed to be a working group of local business leaders who will come together to help generate ideas about advancing economic development in the municipality of Leamington. As council's aware, the Economic Development Office conducts an active corporate calling program where our staff go out and visit local businesses to discuss with them and identify and help them overcome any specific concerns they have relating to their business. And while this approach is effective in helping individual businesses, by its nature, it can only identify those issues that are specific to a particular business, whereas we are increasingly finding that the most pressing concerns are going to be issues that are affecting an entire industry or the economy of Leamington as a, as a whole. But really, we don't yet have a venue for bringing our business community together to identify and, and create strategies for those larger challenges that we're facing. So to help address this need, the Economic Development Office is proposing the creation of what we're calling a Business Leadership Forum, which is going to be a small group of business leaders who will help generate ideas on local economic development, help identify long-term economic trends and challenges that we need to be facing, and generally serve as informal advisors regarding our economic development initiatives. Effectively, we've, this group is going to serve as a brain trust that the Economic Development Office can consult with to help strengthen our business supports and proactively identify any emerging, emerging challenges and opportunities that we may face. As outlined in my report in the attached terms of reference for the forum, the Business Leadership Forum is proposed to be recruited from the leaders of major employers or economic drivers within Leamington. The group will convene three times a year to discuss these trends impacting our local economy. The role of this group will be consultative in nature. The role really will be to identify those trends affecting our economy, provide specific feedback on economic development initiatives that the municipality or is undertaking, and generally consult on issues relating to economic development. It's our intention that discussions at the Business Leadership Forum will be informal in nature. It's envisioned primarily as a venue to generate ideas that the Economic Development Office can then take back and put into action, operationalize, and use them to strengthen the, the business supports that we already have. Commitment from the business owners is, or business leaders is going to be light by design. We really want them, want them to come and give us the benefit of their experience for a few times every year to really tap into that wealth of experience in the local economy that we've got out there amongst our major employers. The Economic Development Office, through our corporate calls, has been floating this idea with some of our business leaders since it was initially presented to council back in April, and we've received some considerable interest in participating in such a group. So the full scope in terms of reference of the proposed Business Leadership Forum is outlined in my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have at this point.
Thank you very much. I just really want to jump in quickly, because I know prior to your coming on stream, we attempted a Economic Development Committee, and it was extremely frustrating and really quite a failure. So I wasn't really entertaining the idea of doing that again, but I know the deputy mayor brought this idea forward again, and it morphed into, or got massaged into, more of this idea, which I'm really thrilled with, and I think it's, it's a great concept that that has been brought forward, so I'm looking forward to it. And as long as I understand, they do not control what you do, they're there as advisors, this is what we're seeing, and don't try to direct you, that's, that's our job, I'm going to be quite happy with it. So I'm pleased to see this moving forward. So I have Counselor Jacobs and the deputy mayor next.
Thank you, worship. I guess along the lines of the mayor's comments, I guess, what type of reports will come back to us in respect to this, like, reporting on the progress and the outcomes of this type of a program? And how often can we expect to see that, to see exactly where we stand with this?
Well, as I mentioned, the, the intention of the council is to generate ideas, and we'll take those ideas away from the, from the Business Leadership Forum, put those into a workable form as a new economic development initiative, or a, or an addition to an existing initiative, and then bring those back to council for review and approval in the traditional way that we do so already. So in terms of the frequency of reports back from the Business Leadership Forum itself, to a large part, that's going to depend on the sort of ideas that come out of there, and whether, you know, these are quick win-type initiatives that we can undertake, or whether these are longer structural things that we need to look at. In terms of the overall reporting on our economic development process, we're going to be bringing back an annual report to council in December of every year that reports on our overall progress on our economic development initiatives. And depending on what comes out of these discussions, I'll be back here sooner highlighting the discussions that are going on at the forum.
If I may, so we will not receive any, I guess, formal, I guess, reports on this just once per year? That'll be it?
Well...
Mr. Newfeld?
I think that the, the way to look at this, James described what this is, it's a leadership forum. I think the best way to look at what it is not is a committee of council, and that's an important distinction. This is really about opening up the, the minds of the business people, not as related specifically to their business, but generally speaking. So there, the idea of there being a report on what was discussed, I think is, is difficult to define, because as James is saying, the idea is to get people who are in business, noticing the trends within their business, talking with other people who are in business with the trends in their business, and trying to bring that together to prepare ourselves for the future. It's not really about what we've done now, but what we, what we need to know to move forward. Maybe the best way of looking at it is for us to be able to say, we're bringing this idea, we're bringing an idea to council. The reason we're bringing this is because we have spoken to people in business, and these are the trends that they're seeing, so we are trying to get ahead of the curve, and that's why we're making the, the recommendation to move in a certain direction.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to see when we first talked about this, not a political entity, although I'd be dying to sit at the table. But, but to see us, to see the industry leaders probably, problem-solving, everyone seems, and I hate to use the word work in their silos, but they do, and so for one sector to be able to say, we have this coming down the road, this industry, you need to prepare yourself so that you're ahead of the game. You're, you're, there won't be a problem to solve, because you will already have solved the problem by anticipating what's coming. So, so this is going to be a benefit to the community, not to council. I think it's fantastic. I'm so glad you've already moved forward on this, James. This will only be, be good for all of us. It'll be good for the sectors, it will be good for the community, and like I said, I never saw it as a, as a political entity that we would have any input in. I just saw it as something working for, for industry, all the industries together, and then ultimately the community. And this came, this was not a brainchild, I can't take credit for that. This was just discussion that I'd had with different folks in different sectors who had talked about things that were coming down the pipe for them, and how they would like to see other industry ready for that. So to see this happening is great. James, further to that, are you expecting the first meeting in September or not until next year?
The plan is to have the first meeting in September this year.
Great, good, good. I'm really, I'm really happy this is moving forward. Good on you. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Just, I got a question for James, but I want to comment back to Mr. Newfeld. You say that won't be a pillar of council. I'm fine with that, but I think there'd be a lot of valuable data that's going to come out of these meetings that I'd like to have a look at at least, you know, whether it be minutes that are taken from this, that are handed out to council afterwards, for us to follow up on possibly, but I think there'll be important data that comes out of that, out of these discussions. So that's my thoughts in regards to that, and I hope you consider that, we can, you know, brainstorm that one afterwards. I guess my question was, I had the same question Counselor Jacobs had about the reports, I wanted to see something like that, but minutes would work for me. Second question's in regard to membership. It says here that it consists of 10 business leaders, all business leaders are able to Let's say you get a big overwhelming response, a selection process, how do you figure that's going to go?
So our, our aim will be to ensure that the major sectors of our economy are represented, and that the major employers that we have in our organization are represented. And the way that this question has been handled in the past in other communities that have tried something like this is that if they put the word out there that there's going to be this Business Leadership Forum, and they get more applicants than they can readily handle on the forum itself to, to ensure that the discussions are manageable, that it's not, that it's a focused group, what they have done is that they have used those people who have expressed interest but aren't able to necessarily be within the group itself to consult on specific, industry-specific initiatives. So say that as a result of our discussions, we've highlighted that there's a particular need in our manufacturing sector, then we have a pool of other business leaders who aren't necessarily involved in the broader discussion that we can go to and serve almost like a focus group, or, or draw on that expertise on an industry-specific way, so that if there's interest out there, we're not, we're not squandering that interest.
So I'm guessing that you'll be going after, it'd be major pillars then of our, like, I'm picturing agriculture, tourism, small business, manufacturing, development/real estate. You only got 10 that you can, you can pick, so would those be your major headers that you're, you're looking at?
That would, that would be correct.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you, and my thoughts were just exactly what Counselor Wilkinson was referring to. I hope we get to a position where we have so many people that want to, or interested parties, that we have the opportunity to select, you know, a wide range of people, and I also had farming, industry, manufacturing, building, so we're all, our thoughts are much the same. We know we have a good BIA operating right now, so I guess to my question, would the BIA members currently there be allowed to be a part of this? Because they also do represent some of the, the businesses uptown.
So with regard to community organizations like the BIA, the Chamber, any nonprofit groups, again, this is, our benchmarking research in other communities that have done initiatives like this have, have found that business forums tend to be most effective when they focus directly on the business leaders themselves and developing that relationship directly with the business. So they don't typically include direct representatives from any organizations that may have a mandate of their own. However, it's, it's really important to develop those relationships, so in some cases, members of those organizations that have their own mandates have been invited to present to the council or consult directly with the Business Leadership Forum if there's a particular issue that they're looking for feedback on. But we would absolutely want to ensure that all of the sectors of our economy are represented in some way.
Thanks, James. I, I think the concept is great, and I truly hope that you do get a lot of interested parties. You know, we always hear from those that are asking questions or possibly even complaining about some things. Here's an opportunity for some people to step up and be of real help to us, so thank you.
Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, thanks, James, good report. I hope you can get 10 people, because we couldn't even get two people to look over our, our financials. What is the least amount you can run with?
Well, you know, I would say perhaps a group of five would be sufficient to generate a discussion and at least start the ball rolling, build some momentum behind the forum, and, you know, through, as I, as I mentioned, when I've been out meeting with businesses and doing corporate calls over the last few months, I have been floating this idea with some of the business leaders from our major employers, from our major economic sectors, and I have definitely received some interest and some verbal commitments that it would be something they'd be interested in participating in.
Counselor, I, I would say that, just, you know, based on all the stuff that all of us have been involved in with the different growers and producers and manufacturers and everybody else, be it on the complaint side or the, the positive side, and the amount of change, the, the growth that has been happening in our town, they're all pretty excited, because they're all stepping forward on, on different levels, whether it's charitable donations or whatever. I, I don't think you're going to have any trouble finding a minimum of 10 to, to sign up on this. I think, I think the community's pretty excited, so, yeah, good stuff. Mr. Newfeld?
Just, just further to that, I think, again, looking at what this organization is not, it's not a place for special interest groups to come forward and advocate for their particular area of industry. This is supposed to be a gratuitous exchange of ideas. So if you can understand that what James can do is find trends in agriculture and, for example, trends in tourism, where now we start combining tourism and agriculture so that we have a, a way of bringing people to Leamington to understand our greenhouse industry through the tourism mechanism. What we don't want is a tourism company there advocating for their, their tours, if you can see the, the difference, okay? So what we're really trying to do is tap into the great experience of, of our business leaders, and I know James said, you know, five would be great to get it started, but some of the best conversations I've had have been one-on-one with some of our business leaders, when they aren't really necessarily talking about their own particular business, but looking at the, the way that things are changing, what they see as important lead, what we call leading indicators about the future of the economy, especially here in Leamington. That's the kind of stuff that we want to hear about. Something that they may not feel is terribly significant within their industry may be very significant in something that's happening in, in a different merging industry. So I, I think that it's important that we recognize this isn't a, it's not a place for people to come and advocate for the, their own particular business, because if you want to get something off the rails real fast, that's how you do it.
Further questions? What are council's wishes, then, with the recommendation? Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Counselor Dunn, discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries. Next report is one regarding the subdivision assumption of SAD South Winds, Phase 1 Magaw, Babkirk Lane. so that we have a, a way of bringing people to Leamington to understand our greenhouse industry through the tourism mechanism. What we don't want is a tourism company there advocating for their, their tours, if you can see the, the difference, okay? So what we're really trying to do is tap into the great experience of, of our business leaders. And I know James said, you know, five would be great to get it started, but some of the best conversations I've had have been one-on-one with some of our business leaders when they aren't really necessarily talking about their own particular business, but looking at the, the way that things are changing, what they see as important lead, what we call leading indicators about the future of economy, especially here in Leamington. That's the kind of stuff that we want to hear about. Something that they may not feel is terribly significant within their industry may be very significant in something that's happening in, in a different merging industry. So I, I think that it's important that we recognize this isn't a, it's not a place for people to come and advocate for the, their own particular business because if you want to get something off the rails real fast, that's how you do it.
Further questions? What are council's wishes then with the recommendation? Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next report is one regarding the subdivision assumption of SAD South Winds Phase One Magaw, Babkirk Lane and Seekliffe Heights. Mr. Botham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically subdivision developments follow four basic steps that include development agreements, construction, accept, acceptance and assumption. Assumption is the last step to complete the process, after which the municipality assumes all responsibility for municipal services. So in Leamington tonight, we're asking council to consider South Winds Phase One. And I also included in my report, figure one, just to show council generally where these three developments are. So South Winds Phase One, Babkirk Lane and Seekliffe Heights Phase Three. SAD or South Winds Phase One subdivision is located east of County Road 33 and south of Oak Street. Phase one of the development included the extension of Clarence Avenue, constructions of portions of Sunningdale, Heathview Trail and the construction of Somerville Avenue. Magaw subdivision is located east of Erie Street South and connects to Countess Street. The development included the extension of Magaw Street and the construction of Babkirk Lane. Seekliffe Heights Phase Three subdivision is Christina Crescent located between Benny Avenue and Peter Street. Municipal services for South Winds Phase One up to and including surface course asphalt have been installed to the satisfaction of the municipality, save and accept the installation of sidewalks. And the sidewalk construction is complete now. Municipal services for Babkirk Lane up to and including surface course asphalt have been installed to the satisfaction of the municipality. And Seekliffe Heights Phase Three services again up to and including surface asphalt have been installed to the satisfaction of the municipality. And while both Magaw and Seekliffe Heights are older subdivision agreements, the final works were just completed over the last two years. And for council's consideration in, in financial impact section, we are holding securities for South Winds in the amount of $83,000 currently. And that should be reduced to an amount equal to 25% of the value of the sidewalk for the duration of their maintenance period. Securities for Magaw or Babkirk Lane and Seekliffe Heights have already been released to the developers. So we're asking council to consider accepting the sidewalk construction within the SAD or South Winds Phase One subdivision and assume municipal services for SAD or South Winds Phase One, save and accept the sidewalk and all services for Magaw and all services for Seekliffe Heights Phase Three.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. Alan, when we receive these or like what the sidewalks as an example, what is the timeframe for these sidewalks to be installed? Like you said, the one was like two years in the, in the process, but like if you look at the new subdivisions now, Gulfwood and Destiny and so forth, like do they wait till that whole thing is done or can they, like is there a period where you have, I guess, what percentage has been built and when do those sidewalks do go in? Is there any rule of thumb?
Well, there's certainly a great debate over when we install sidewalks in subdivisions. So it's important though to bear in mind that Magaw and Seekliffe Heights agreements did not include for any sidewalk. That was prior to a shift in our, our policies where we add sidewalks into subdivisions. But we have terms and conditions written into the development agreements when they need to get the sidewalk installed. I think I was in front of council a year or two ago talking about this particular, the SAD or South Winds subdivision and we, we had written in their agreement that they needed sidewalks installed by the spring of 2018, if I'm not mistaken. So they're written into the development agreements.
So there's no timeline, like, like looking at what's going on in the, those three major subdivisions that are being currently under construction. I just, like, there is no timeline, I guess, like when it's 25, 30, 50%, 75% built, do we put them in? Like, how do we encourage those to get in there for the safety of those individuals purchasing?
Well, we encourage it by, by writing those clauses in the development agreement. And I, forgive me, I don't know the date, but there is a timeline for the installation of sidewalk in the Grassy subdivision, for example. And there's a timeline for the installation of the sidewalk in the Santos subdivision. So when we miss those dates or we get close to those dates and we start having conversations with the developers and trying to encourage them to get the, the work done.
Counselor Dunn.
Through you, your worship. Alan, my question is, you said the sidewalks are completed for that one subdivision and we're still holding on to their money? Is there a certain duration that you, you want to make sure that the sidewalks are in good repair? Is it a year or something?
Yes. In this case, we hold the securities for 12 months and then we look at the sidewalk again and then come back to council and request that you assume the services in this case and then we'll release the securities.
And further with regard to what Counselor Jacobs was saying about the sidewalks, I lost it. Sorry.
We'll come back to you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you thought this was going to be a quick report, but I have a question too. The problem though is if, if you put the sidewalks in too soon and your, your subdivision isn't moving along as quickly as, as you had planned, and then you've got construction vehicles coming over that sidewalk, you've got a broken sidewalk. Is that not correct?
Or we have?
Broken sidewalks.
Broken sidewalk. When the construction, if you're, say like you said that the SAD one was, or the South Winds was supposed to be in by spring of 2018, well, really that, that subdivision didn't get going quite as quickly as the developer had thought. So then if you push them to put that sidewalk in, then you could end up with damaged sidewalk just because you're having houses built and construction vehicles driving over it. Is that not right?
That's true. And that's why I mentioned we have had great debates over when you put sidewalks in. The unfortunate thing is if we don't encourage it and we don't get it done, inevitably we're, we're struggling for years and years and years to get the sidewalk in. And it's important that we get it constructed. Consider South Winds, they've got, I don't know, a dozen houses in there now. There's people living there. They want to use the subdivision. They want to use the sidewalks, go for walks. We need to get the sidewalk constructed. And the contractors need to be aware and careful and, and repair the things that they break. But it's not a perfect situation, admittedly.
Back to Counselor Dunn.
Thank you, worship. Through you, worship, again. Again, where was I? I remembered. It was regarding the timeline and the penalty that you required from these subdivisions and that time limit. Is there any point at which they might lose their penalty for not meeting the timeline that you're, even if you stay on them?
Well, it's, it's not necessarily a penalty. We're holding securities to get them to encourage the works and we're trying to hold the appropriate amount so that if it does come to this, we could hire a contractor and construct that, that missing piece ourselves.
So at no time would they actually lose the money unless they didn't do the job properly?
They, I don't, maybe I'm not understanding your question, but they provide securities equal to the value of the construction. So we're expecting them to build a facility, say it's sidewalks. So they're expecting to pay for that. So they'll either pay the contractor to do it or we'll pay the contractor to do it.
I understand. You know, my thought was that if there's a certain time limit and they miss that time limit at some point, would you, that, that's when you'll step in to do it or do the work?
Yes. Again, that's, that's why we try to write timeline, time limits into the, into the development agreements and then we start talking to the, to the, to the developers to get the work done or we're going to do it for them.
And if we step in to do it for them, we use their security deposit to pay for it. So. Mr. Neufeld.
One other consideration about the timing of putting in sidewalks. Consider not putting in the sidewalks and people pour their driveways, then it's time to bring the sidewalks along and we want to cut through their driveways, which are colored and stamped. And you say, well, just leave it, just about up to it. Well, then the settling of the sidewalk and the settling of the driveway take place at different times and now you have trip hazards, which then cause lawsuits, so on and so forth. So as, as we have talked about on many occasions, it, it's not an easy one to resolve.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you. I just add to that. Like I noticed though in Destiny and I believe Gulf ones, they do have the sidewalk separated within the driveways that they are pouring. I don't know if you've been down through there or not, but I was quite taken with that. In other words, we're not, we don't have to cut them and redo them, so. I don't know if that was your idea, Alan, or not, but it was a good one.
Counselor Hammond's idea. There you go. Okay, so there's move, move the recommendation by Counselor Burbicki, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next report is one regarding the outfitting of two of our dump truck cabs and chassis. Mr. Brown.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and members of council. Yep, so this report is on the results of tenders received for the outfitting of two dump truck cabin chassis. And pursuant to previous council resolutions, administration has purchased two cabin chassis. One is a one and a half ton and the other one is a 15 ton tandem. So tenders were issued to outfit each cab and chassis with required dump boxes, plows, salting units and necessary accessories. So for the one and a half ton, two compliant tenders were received with El equip out of Alora, Ontario being the lowest bidder. One tender was, was received and opened for the 15 ton. It was from Viking out of Mount Forest, Ontario, and it also met the required minimum specifications. So as detailed in the report, the overall cost to purchase a one and a half ton dump truck, including the cabin chassis, will be approximately $9,700 over budget. However, the total cost to purchase a 15 ton dump truck will be about $24,500 under budget. So it's resulting in a net under budget position of over $14,000. So the recommendation is that the purchase of the truck body, plow, salter and necessary attachments from El equip and Viking be approved for purchase and that the manager of Public Works be authorized to execute the purchase agreements. Thank you.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. I just want to say, Ken, thanks for the detailed bid process here. I really appreciate it and I'll move the recommendation.
Second by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? And carried. You let him off easy tonight. The next report, tax sale registration by Ms. Roach.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. The Finance Department works daily with property owners to provide service to customers and obviously to collect property taxes by issuing statements, overdue notices, written letters and sending correspondence. Property tax due dates are published in the South Point Sun on the website and pushed out through social media. New legislation introduced last year allows a municipality to register tax arrears certificates against a property if they were, if there were tax arrears owing on January 1st of the second year following that in which the taxes became owing. Previously, the legislation was three years. So this means that on January 1st of 2018, a municipality has the authority to commence a tax sale registration process on any property with tax arrears owing from 2016 and prior by registering a tax arrears certificate against the property. One year from that date, a tax, the tax certificate is registered, the municipality may advertise the property to be sold through a tax sale. So annually, we review the outstanding receivables for properties that are at or approaching eligibility for tax sale registration. Extensive follow-up with property owners is done by the tax team by phone, email, mail correspondence, including registered mail. So the property owners are guided on how to avoid the tax sale process given their current arrears. Currently, those property owners that qualify for tax sale are issued correspondence with a specific date in which they must make payment of the third year and any prior year taxes that are due, along with all interest and penalty charged to the account. If payment is not received by the due date, the files are sent to real tax recovery specialists who are experts in the municipal property tax registration and sales process. All real tax costs are charged to the property and are fully recoverable to the municipality. Real tax prepares the tax certificate registration, orders title searches and prepares all required notices under legislation. This process is very prescribed and gives the owner several opportunities to make payments. So one year after the tax sale regis, or the tax property is registered, if the property is still in arrears, the property is eligible to be advertised for the tax sale process. So once a property is registered, full payment is required to cancel the process. So for properties that do go through to tax sale, there's a four-week advertising in our local paper on the website as well as on the Ontario Tax Sale website. There's a minimum bid amount, which includes all arrears on the property, including levied taxes, interest, penalty, retail costs or real tax costs, et cetera. So should a tax sale not result in a successful purchase, the municipality has two years upon which to decide to vest the property or return it to the property owner. Regardless of its decision to vest, the municipality has the ability to write off any or all accumulated tax arrears after an unsuccessful tax sale. So as properties become eligible to be registered for tax sale, a strategic review is considered given the risk, reward, liability and value of the property. The purpose of the tax sale statute is to bring the process of tax collection to a close. So the tax team have completed the required due diligence following collection principles and have essentially exhausted all efforts to otherwise collect the debt prior to the point in which the time the tax arrears lien is registered. So the tax collection process has been proven to be very effective. In fact, over the last three years, 85% of those property owners paid on the first letter demanding payment. So if I could ask you to turn to Table A on page 40 of the agenda, I'll just walk you through that table. So in 2015, the value of taxes that were on properties that were three years in arrears or greater was valued at 6,200, sorry, 624,000, sorry, I lost that. $624,000, thank you. We sent out 114 letters. We received 88 payments. So that would be the third year plus all interest and penalty that was on the account. We registered 26 properties. Upon registration, when we sent it to real tax, of course, they're doing all their title searches and sending out, continuing to send out notices to those property owners, 24 then paid. So we had two that were advertised through the tendering process. One was purchased through the open tender and then one was vested and that property was about $40,000. So the entire process is, is very effective. I think our numbers show that. So currently, the municipality has a tax collection policy in place, as I've noted in the report, that specifically identifies that a residential property may be registered with three years of tax arrears, not including current, and vacant land is at two years. So this policy also allows for suitable arrangements, which is very specific in the policies, saying that the payment must be one and a half times the current year's tax owing prior, and payment be made prior to the end of the year with postdated checks. Historically, the municipality has offered payment arrangements many years ago, I understand, and followed this policy. However, property owners continued to default and it became very administratively cumbersome. So as such, these suitable arrangements are not, no longer being offered. So the practice, as I mentioned, is to collect the third year of outstanding taxes when we send out those notices, as well as all interest and penalty to clear them up. And we actually do see many of them become repeat customers, so we will see them hitting the list the next year. So this is, this is something that they do to just get by. They know, they know the, the game and the rules, so. The collection process is intended to ensure that all property owners are treated fairly and are required to pay their portion for the services and infrastructure provided by the municipality, the same as their neighbor. So the change to reduce the timeframe from three years in arrears to two years to follow legislate, legislation is expected to have a similar impact on the collection of outstanding taxes with minimal effect on property owners. So reducing the timeframe to register the properties from three years to two years will lessen the amount of debt on the property, including interest and penalty, which may in fact help the property owner actually pay for their outstanding taxes. So currently, from the 10,000 plus properties in Leamington, we have 59 accounts that are three years plus current year's taxes outstanding, totaling about 761,000, plus an additional unique 108 accounts valued at 1.3 million that are two years plus current year outstanding. So overall, this represents about 1.6% of all of our So overall, this represents about one point six percent of all of our properties, so it's not a significant number. However, it is almost two million dollars. So the recommendation before council this evening is to ask that council direct administration to initiate tax sale registration in accordance with the Modernization Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act 2017 against properties that are two years in arrears, and that tax collection policy F-222 be rescinded, and council direct administration to follow current practice and legislation with respect to tax sale registration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Worship. Laura, what's our interest rate that we charge? If people go into arrears?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. It's one point two five percent monthly.
One point two five percent monthly. And so it's both an interest, plus there's a penalty there. I'm assuming it's a late fee. Is there just one penalty, basically, or is there a number of penalties?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The penalty is calculated after the due date. So we have two grace days after the due date, so let's say the last one, I think, was June thirteenth. So we had two days, the Thursday and Friday, we ran penalty, which is part of the municipal act. I mean, the rate is approved by this council, but it is in the municipal act that says there is a penalty for not paying your property taxes on time. And then at the end of the month is when we charge the interest. So the penalty is only on the tax due dates. So it would be four times a year.
All right. Once they're assessed the penalty, did we put interest onto that penalty as well?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. There is no interest on interest, if that's what you're asking. But there is, the penalty is calculated, and then it's the full amount of interest that is owed. So there are two distinct calculations.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Worship. Laura, when, currently, we're three years in arrears prior to any action being taken, correct? Now, if a person is three years in arrears, can they come up and say, like, pay one year and still be two years so that doesn't trigger it, or once it goes in, all three years must be paid? Like, how do we balance that out?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. It's only the point at which the property is registered is full payment required. So that's where I mentioned where we have fifty-nine accounts that are three years in arrears. So those people, if we followed our normal process, those fifty-nine accounts would get a letter saying you need to pay your third year owing plus all current interest and penalty. So your two and your, like, your two and your one can remain outstanding to avoid going to the process to get your property registered, and then that is when full payment will be required to cancel the process.
So technically speaking, if they just pay one year, they can stay in default for two or, under the new policy, one year. So they could always be one year in arrears under the present structure.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. That's correct.
An interest piles on. Yep, yep. If I could go back to Table A, Laura, like, when I look at 2015, sixteen, seventeen, and the value, that's quite a change. And in my eyes, I'm seeing a very positive change. Am I reading that correctly? Yes?
I, we, I agree, and we had that discussion at senior management as well. I mean, it's probably very reflective of the economy getting better, more people are working, all of that. I mean, when I look at our numbers for 2018, and, you know, we're back up to seven hundred and sixty thousand that were outstanding. I can't put my finger on why that trigger would come up unless our, and I didn't, I didn't look into this in detail, but it may be that our letter triggered, triggering the three years payment back in 2015. We saw some payments be made, and now we're seeing it basically come back full circle again. That may be the reason.
All right. Very good. Okay. Counselor Dunn.
Through you, Worship. Laura, I'd like to bring you back to 2015. You had that one vested property. What happens with that vested property? Is there still the opportunity, because it's now been registered, it's been sent out, the tender process or the auction process? Is there an opportunity for the owners to get that back, or is it still, you're going to send it back out to be re-tendered?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Those properties, when they become vested, they become properties of the municipality. And that's why I mentioned in what I was speaking about, you know, really looking, going forward. When we vest these properties, we need to think strategically about these properties. You know, what's the risk? What's the reward? What's the liability? What's the amount owing? Just to make sure that we have that in check, to make sure we're headed in the right direction.
Mr. Neufeld.
Yeah, just further to that, Counselor Dunn, I think that one of the properties that vested was on Askew, and that is the one that we then gave over to Habitat for Humanity. So there are opportunities with these vested properties. But there may be some properties that we don't want to vest. For example, there are a number of properties that are now water properties. And there are some properties that may be partial properties that have water and are needing extensive shoreline protection. So when Laura talks about being strategic about this, we need to look at what the value is, what the risk is for not vesting, what is the risk for vesting, and what are the legal obligations that come with vesting that property to us?
So there's a recommendation before council. What are our wishes? Moved by Counselor Dunn, support by the deputy mayor. Discussion on that motion. All in favor. Motion carries. Next report is also Ms. Roach regarding the development charges.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. In 2014, council approved that residential and non-residential development charges, with the exception of greenhouse development, be discounted by one hundred percent commencing in August. Since that time, development charges remained on the financials as dedicated reserve funds that were used to fund growth-related projects and historical growth-related debt servicing. In 2017, the greenhouse development charge was four thousand four hundred and two dollars per acre. In May of 2017, council will appeal bylaw 409-14, which expired all development charges in the municipality as of August eleventh. So to comply with legislation, the report before you this evening is the annual financial statement reflecting the activity of the development charge reserve funds. Schedule I provides a summary of the balances prior to the wind-up of the DCs, as well as the funding sources after the development charges were no longer in place. The reserve funds on the wind-up were funded as outlined in my report, Financial 11-17. Schedule II shows the financial activity within the reserve funds. The balance in the reserve funds in total was five point three million dollars prior to the closeout of the DCs. So the only draw on the reserve funds was for a growth-related portion of the demolition project at the PC plant, or PCC plant, as budgeted. This project is also presented on Schedule III on page forty-eight of your agenda. So in seven and a half months that DCs were in place in 2017, on forty-three building permits, the discount was just over one point two million dollars, and there was about the same on the seven farms for greenhouse development. So also on Schedule II, the one million dollars in monies borrowed from the fund for the municipal purposes identifies the existing annual debt servicing for projects that are already completed. We've talked about these before, but these projects include the Shirk, Seacliff Park improvements, the North Trunk Water Main, and PCC upgrades. So the detail provides the in-year activity, and then you will see at the end of Schedule II, the closing balance as of December thirty-first, 2017, is zero. So council is reminded that at any time, development charges may be reinstated following the legislative process as prescribed in the Development Charge Act. This reinstatement process includes a complete background study, updating of the asset management plan to include future projects, public consultation, and then the passing of a new bylaw. So the recommendation before council this evening is that the 2017 Development Charge Reserve Fund statement for the year ending December thirty-first, 2017, be received.
Okay. Counselor Hammond.
Here, Worship. Thank you. Laura and I had a brief discussion just prior to council beginning, and I don't know if you've had a chance to really think your way through that yet. The question I posed to Laura was that, you know, since the development charges have been discontinued, you know, we know that we've had, I think it's roughly fifty building permits. So if we go with the assumption that twenty-five of those were builders that came to town to build because there were no development charges, the other twenty-five were people, just normal residents, building houses. What did we lose on those twenty-five properties, or those twenty-five homes that were built by builders, with respect to development charges? What would our percentage of taxes be based on those twenty-five houses? And what's the recoup time on trying to get those development charges or the money back? So Laura's, I give her an opportunity to work that out, so I think she has some kind of an answer.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I have to put a whole bunch of qualifiers on this before I say these numbers, only because the forty-three building permits that were issued in 2017 would not have just been exclusively residential. So we're making an assumption that, let's say, I did my numbers on twenty. So let's say twenty of them were residential, and we would bring in about two thousand dollars per home in municipal levies. It also assumes that, you know, the discounting of the DCs created that growth. So we've also talked about that before, saying, you know, there is not, we cannot directly say that the discounting created the growth. So, and just based on the revenue comparison, so we're talking the loss revenues of the DCs versus the revenues gained, so we're looking exclusively at the net revenue piece, it's about six years. So they would pay about forty thousand dollars, those twenty homes would pay about forty thousand dollars worth of taxes. We would have charged them, we would have discounted two hundred and forty thousand dollars approximately in development charges. So two forty divided by forty, six years.
Great, Laura, thanks. I tried to do some math at home, but I wasn't sure what our portion of that tax was going to be. So I needed Laura's input on that, but thanks. So six years, I mean, obviously, that home is going to be there a long time. Isn't a bad return. I thought maybe it would be a little quicker than that, but six years is good, because that house will be there forever. So I guess the discontinuance of the development charges was a good idea.
Do you want to address that point? Okay. Mr. Neufeld.
There was another reason why, you know, it's all, looking back retrospective, right? But another thing that council considered at the time, which was, I think, very important, was that at the time, there was very limited inventory for building lots. And so while we may have foregone some of the development charges, and we will pick it up in the taxes, I think it's important to remember that what this really did was stimulate the developers to come in and lay the foundations for their developments, for their subdivisions, put their roads in, get the infrastructure in place. Because when the economic development takes off, and we see the beginning of it now, if council hadn't have taken that preemptive, preemptive move, we could have seen a situation where we need new housing because we have new jobs, and we don't have it available. So really, the genius, if you will, that council made at that time was that it was an incentive for our developers to get back here, to put their infrastructure in the ground, and we have a very healthy inventory of buildable lots now that we didn't have four years ago.
Counselor.
And thank you, Peter, and I, along with that too, and I had given some thought to the idea that now we have also with this, which isn't a revenue to the municipality, in true sense it is, because we now have created a bunch of jobs that maybe wouldn't have necessarily been there and offered a lot of opportunities for young people, I'll say young people compared to myself, a chance to be able to stay back in Leamington to keep working, so.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Worship. Along the lines with Counselor Hammond, I guess. Besides the development charges, like last year, I think was what, a hundred and fifty-eight million in construction that we put out? It looks like we're on target again this year to do that, or exceeded, I would imagine. But this is going to generate a tax increase for us, correct? I mean, aside from the development charges that would have been, I guess, triggered in. What are we looking at roughly? Like, this type of increase would give us what, back to our municipal coffers? I know it's a loaded question, but, you know, just pull a figure out from somewhere?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. In 2018, we assumed a growth of two point one percent in assessment. And that wasn't a huge, huge change. It is very difficult to determine what that will do, because it's all based on assessment, and it's based on when the permit is actually closed and the assessor goes out. We have two years to go back, well, once MPAC gives us the information, they can only go back two years. So we are working with MPAC to make sure that our properties are assessed on a timely basis, to make sure that we have the information to levy the appropriate taxes. So absolutely, it will be an increase. I don't have that number off the top of my head, Counselor Jacobs, but I could come up with that for you.
Well, no, I guess where I'm going with it is the fact that, you know, going back to what Mr. Neufeld said, and, you know, like, getting rid of this, we triggered that, that type of, I guess, construction process. And I was just sort of, you know, just for the general public's knowledge, that we didn't, you know, make a boo-boo in that respect, that we are going to be collecting, you know, a sufficient amount of tax revenue from those developments. So I guess that's where I was going with that. But, no, I really don't need a figure, but I guess you could say that we've generated a substantial amount, correct?
Okay. Further questions, comments? If not, then there's a motion before us. I think we're just receiving this, so, yep. Counselor Dunn. And seconded by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor. Motion carries. Next report is one regarding the transfer of blocks 133, 134, 135, and Ms. Orton.
Thank you. This is in respect of South Winds Development as well. In accordance with the provisions of that Development Control Agreement, the developer transferred a portion of its lands to the municipality, and that was for the purpose of widening the highway previously known as the Eastside Arterial Road and to establish one-foot reserves on the rear of the lots abutting that road. The lands form part of the roadway at the Clarence Avenue intersection and are now known as the Blocks 133, 134, and 135 on the M Plan that's attached to the report. In 2012, the municipality and the County of Essex entered into a jurisdictional transfer agreement for the Eastside Arterial Road, which was transferred to the county and later named County Road Thirty-Three. But the transfer omitted inadvertently Blocks 133 to 135. So the purpose of this report is to obtain council's authorization to transfer those lands to the County of Essex to correct that omission. So it's recommended that the Director of Legal and Legislative Services be authorized to execute all documents to do so.
Questions from council? None. What are council's wishes? Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor. Carry. Next one is one regarding the noise bylaw exemption. Ms. Coughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. The municipality received a request from the tenants of 321 Essex Road Fourteen for an exemption from the municipality's noise bylaw for a wedding reception to be held at that property on Saturday, July seventh. The location is up on the screen. The applicants are requesting permission to have music playing in a tent during the wedding reception for approximately one hundred and seventy-five guests. The property owner has been notified and approves of the event taking place on the property. The applicants have gone through the special event application process, and a special event permit has been conditionally approved, with one of the conditions being a requirement for a noise bylaw exemption to be approved by council. The applicants have advised administration that they have contacted the neighbors within close proximity to the property and to notify them of the noise bylaw exemption request. And at this time, we have not heard from any of the neighbors expressing concern. There's no financial impact on the municipality by granting the noise exemption request. It is therefore recommended that council grant an exemption from Leamington's Noise Bylaw Number 431-03, Section 2.1, between the hours of 2:00 p.m. to 11:59 p.m. on Saturday, July- July 7th, 2018, and from midnight to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 8th, for a wedding reception to be held at 321 Essex Road 14.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, support by Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. And final report is one regarding the Essex Power Corporation appointment of proxy holders. Ms. Percy.
So this is an annual report. The municipality of Leamington is a shareholder of Essex Power Corporation. Essex Power is required to hold an annual meeting of shareholders and occasionally requires a special meeting of the shareholders. Leamington's two directors appointed to the Essex Power Board is Mayor John Patterson and Mr. Frank Ritchie, who vote on behalf of the municipality at board meetings, but that appointment does not authorize them to vote at the annual shareholders' meeting. The only practical way for municipal council to cast its shareholder vote at a shareholders' meeting is by proxy. It's suggested that council appoint Mayor Patterson as its proxy holder to vote on behalf of the municipality at the 2017 shareholders' general meeting. It's also suggested that Mr. Ritchie be appointed as an alternate in the event that Mayor Patterson is absent. This year's annual meeting is scheduled for July 17th. The agenda will be circulated prior to the annual meeting, and often the matters to be voted are of routine business. If the mayor determines there's a matter on the annual meeting agenda of special importance, he can seek direction from council on how the municipality's shareholder vote should be cast on that issue. There's no financial impact, so the recommendation's before council to appoint Mayor John Patterson as proxy holder for municipality of Leamington, to cast its shareholders' votes at Essex Power Corporation's 2017 annual meeting, Frank Ritchie be appointed as an alternate proxy holder, and the clerk be authorized to sign in forward to Essex Power all necessary proxy forms to implement this resolution.
Okay, moved by Counselor Verbeke, support by Counselor Dunn. To answer, I think the question you were asking is if one of us is no longer around, whichever, it's a staggered appointment, so Mr. Ritchie is on for four years, but two years into the term of the mayor, so.
We're the mayor, thanks for that, but mine was, if you can't make it, he can't make it. That's what I meant, like.
We're not getting a vote.
No, that's fair.
So somebody's got to be there, yeah.
No, but if either one of you are sick, there's not a third, that's what I mean.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Nope, nope, I don't think that fits into the bylaws of the corporation, so. Anyway, further questions, comments? All in favor of that motion, then? And motion carries. Yep, I thought there was. I can't remember who moved it and seconded it, though. Counselor Verbeke.
And myself.
And Counselor Dunn, so. There are some matters for approval, the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting, looking for, Counselor Dunn is moving receipt of the information, seconded by Counselor Verbeke, discussion on that motion, all in favor? And carried. There were no other matters for consideration that I'm aware of, or is there? Nope. Report in closed session, I know that one.
A closed meeting was held at 5:30 p.m. prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsection 239-2 C of the Municipal Act for the purpose of considering one item. Confidential report, LLS 4518 dated June 22nd regarding alley and Mill Street, Plan 375 Staples. As a result of this meeting, the following suggested action is before council for consideration in open session. Part one, on reference Plan 12R 22697, be offered for sale to the owner of 602 County Road 8 Staples, and part two, on reference Plan 12R 22697, be offered for sale to the owner of 604 County Road 8 Staples, each for the purchase price of $1, with the condition that the purchaser pay all costs of the municipality associated with the closure of that portion of the alley and transfer of the lands. You'll need a mover in a second.
Moved by Counselor Dunn, supported by the Deputy Mayor. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? Motion carries. Consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 42-18 being a bylaw to provide for the relocation of the culvert over the Hooker Drain in Lot 6, Concession 7 in the municipality of Leamington, County of Essex, that's for first and second reading only. Bylaw 4318 being a bylaw to provide for access culverts and a berm over the Lebo Creek Drain Northwest Branch in Lot 6, Concession 7 in the municipality of Leamington, again, that's only first and second reading. And bylaw 44-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held June 25, 2018.
Moved by Counselor Verbeke, supported by Counselor Jacobs, discussion on the motion, all in favor? Motion carries. Moving into, well, there were no notices of motion circulated, so open session. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Rob, I've had a number of residents on Erie Street raise concerns about the removal of trees during our construction planned. Can you explain the criteria to remove the trees and advise whether or not some of those trees can be relocated instead of removed?
Through you, worship. Certainly whenever we're doing reconstruction projects such as the Erie-Souther separation, and we try and minimize the amount of trees that we have to take out, sometimes that's not always possible. And in the case of Erie Streets, oh, there are a lot of large trees that have to be In restoring the property at the end of the project, we plan to plant a lot of trees, a lot of, that are on our native tree species list and work towards beautification, but specifically to the trees that we've identified that have to be moved because they're in the way. We can spade and relocate some of the smaller trees. So sometimes residents have planted trees in what appears to be their property, but it was actually in the public driveway in the boulevard, and the resident is looking to keep that tree or have it removed or relocated. We have offered to residents that for the smaller trees, again, we're talking probably four inches in diameter, that we can spade them and move them inward towards the resident's property where they'd like them located. If they do not want that to happen, the tree will simply be cut down. We can't get a deep spade in there because there's a lot of buried utilities in and around that area, and then that creates a lot of problems when you're pulling up the roots, you know, you risk breaking bell lines, power lines, gas lines. But we have offered that to some of the residents that want that done, and certainly if anyone wants that done, just Alex DeBraco's the project manager on that, and most residents have his contact information from previous correspondence, so they just need to talk to Alex, and he'll see what they can do for them.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Now that you had the parking situation for Rick Atkin Park resolved with the apartment building, but I've been getting complaints now that with the relocation of the charter boats for fishing, these fishermen are coming in now and are parking on the upper tier because it's very close to where the boats are. So they're wondering, a lot of these individuals want to use that particular park for parking, are unable to now. So maybe something could be done with the marina or with the individuals to see that we can get that moved.
Mr. Newfeld?
I've noticed that as well, and I anticipate having a conversation with Paul Barnable on his return, that we can have a correspondence with those charter fisheries. They should, we want to make sure that the parking for Rick Atkin Park is used for the intention that it was set.
Anything further, staff? Counselor Hammond?
I'm sorry, I didn't have my hand up. I have two or three things. My question was very similar to Counselor Wilkinson's. I was asked about, Rob, how many trees they thought we were going to have to remove for the installation of the new skateboard park they're concerned about, and I, I'm looking at those trees, and I think they're too large to move. Do you have any idea how many of those mature trees are going to have to come out of there?
Through you, worship. One of the design directions that we've given to the consultant and that we're hoping they can work in is to try and build the park and incorporate some of the existing trees to potentially wind the park around them. We felt that the trees provided some shade and some beautification, and again, we're in the business of planting trees as a municipality, not in removing them, though sometimes they're in the way. So we, I don't know exactly how many will have to go, there're likely a couple that will have to go, but we'll minimize that and we'll certainly get that information to council when it's ready. Just a brief update to council on that project. So we did have a public consultation regarding the design of the skate park. The consultant has gone away, they've taken that information they've received, they're going to be preparing another concept drawing, we're going to have our second round of public consultation so that everybody can see what we're proposing, and then, you know, so long as we feel it's an adequate design and it meets the needs of the stakeholders, then we'll be moving forward with that.
Great, thank you, Rob. Can I continue on? Thank you. I wanted to, we have closed off the Accessibility Committee. I should have mentioned something during our time when we had the Accessible Report, but I think it's important that, and to mention, these people that volunteer their time, we've had a great committee this year. I think we've accomplished, as a committee, a number of things, some of those you've seen in the paper with respect to, you know, what's been done at the boardwalk, down at the lake, in the marina, and we've got a good committee, and I want to acknowledge them, if you don't mind. The Chair of that is Karen Jones, Paul Chowd is on the committee, Donald Geisberg and Robert Barry are great, I mean, they're in a chair, so when we do inspections, and we've done four or five of them this year, the Bank Theatre to mention one, it's nice to have somebody in a chair because it gives them, you get a different idea of what they really need to, you know, to be able to maneuver around, so it's great to have that. And I also want to thank too, Michelle Doherty and Denise McGregor, they've been good on this committee for the last few years. I hope that we're able to get them back and keep them back again, because, and as I said, we've closed off the committee now for the next few months, but anyway. And the only other good thing I have to say is that, you know, we were down at the Antha Theatre on Saturday night, the bank on the 42nd put on their first presentation. Due to the weather conditions, it was to be expected, we only had about 200 people, but I think the ones that were there had a good time. The music is good, you can hear to the top of the hill because I went around, there's no problem doing that. I think there's a lot, I mentioned down there that the upcoming events for this weekend, there's a lot of excitement about that Antha Theatre, and there are a lot of great comments about it, so hopefully we have a great summer and the weather stays where we can use it.
The biggest catch. Mr. Newfeld? Sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read a little bit of an email that I've received, and you'll understand where this is going in just a minute. It's from Justine Taylor, who's with OGVG, the Ontario Greenhouse Vegetable Growers. And she writes, as we are aware, our farmers rely heavily on support from the international farm worker community to ensure that we continue to produce fresh, healthy produce right here in Ontario. These farm workers leave their families for many months at a time with the hopes of building a strong future for their families back home. Many of these workers live in our community, communities, for part of the year, returning home yearly during the off-season. We see workers from Mexico, Jamaica, Honduras, Thailand, and Guatemala, just to name a few of the nationalities that support our Ontario agrifood sector. Unfortunately, with so many different populations in a relatively small geographic area, cultural tensions, employment anxiety, and feelings of isolation or separation can arise quite easily. And so OGVG has taken the lead on an initiative aimed at developing a framework to create a stronger sense of inclusion and integration between residents and non-resident communities in rural locations. So what is happening is that OGVG has taken the lead on a program which is scheduled for Thursday, June 28th. Let me just, sorry, let me just go back here just for a second. It's beginning at 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. at the Roma Club. And this forum is to engage the community to talk about these things. It is sponsored, let me get this in, that it's sponsored by the OGVG, the municipality of Leamington, the town of Kingsville, and the migrant worker community program. And so these four organizations, of which we are one, are reaching out to community stakeholders about the issues that we've talked about several times, even here in this particular forum. They're calling it Building a Stronger, More Connected Kingsville-Leamington Community Aspiration Workshop. So I would encourage all of council to attend, there will be some from administration who will be attending, and to reach out to community groups and the people that we've heard from, people who have had complaints, people who have ideas about how to create a better integration. I'll give you a sense of what the goals, the session goals are, and I've got three or four bullet points here, but to create a shared understanding of the issue of integrating temporary foreign workers into the local community for a variety of diverse, from a variety of diverse perspectives. To create a shared understanding of the community's current programs, services, and assets. To build consensus around a shared aspiration for the community that is welcoming and facilitates mutual understanding, respect, and support for all. And that means both local residents and the temporary foreign workers or the international workforce. And to identify the current assets, challenges, and opportunities to realizing the shared vision for the community, and to identify additional community champions to support this work. OGVG has done an awful lot of work and have engaged an external consultant from Waterloo, who has been involved in these sorts of community integration and facilitation workshops. So again, I encourage our community to join in on June 28th at the Roma Club between 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., so that we can create the welcoming community that is respectful for everybody, both the local residents and our international guest workers. I'll stop there in case there are any questions, because I have one other announcement.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mr. Newfeld. I'm just wondering, are we advertising this, or any of the four bodies, has it been advertised?
Yeah, OGVG has taken the lead on advertising. We have lent our logo to it. It has been out there, most, I believe mostly in social media, but I think that there's been something in the local print media as well. But that's one of the reasons I'm raising it tonight. And secondly, I have a very good announcement. I am pleased to announce that the municipality of Leamington has been successful in attracting a new fire chief. It has been a long process, but we didn't want to settle. This is such an important component and strategic component for the municipality going forward, so I'm pleased to announce, and he wasn't able to be here with us tonight, but will be in the near future, Mr. Andrew Baird comes to us from South Huron Fire Department. He has been the fire chief and CEMC there for the last three and a half years. Prior to that was with the Dutton-Dunwich Fire Department. He also has experience at the Canadian Pacific Railway as an operations manager, so he brings management experience as well as a long list of qualifications with respect to fire protection and emergency services. And the one area that I was most focused on when meeting Mr. Baird during the interview was to talk about how we assess a municipality's needs going forward. The municipality of Leamington has changed significantly in the last 10 or 15 years, but most dramatically in the last four years, where we've seen building structures that we haven't seen before, the explosion of the greenhouse operations. And so one of my concerns as the CAO is, are we properly equipped to deal with the emergency services and fire protection in particular in the Leamington of 2018 and onward? Council will recall that during the budget sessions, there was an initial request for a new fire truck. We have two that are coming up that are going to need replacement. To this point, do we merely replace like for like based on what we bought 20 years ago? This is the kind of assessment that I'm challenging and charging. This is the kind of assessment that I'm challenging and charging Mr. Baird to undertake immediately upon his employment with us, that we look at what does the Leamington of today and tomorrow need, so that when we go to replace large capital assets, that we're focused on our future needs, not on what was required in the past. And so that was the part that struck me very strongly with Mr. Baird. I'm looking forward to him joining us, and his start date is expected to be August 23rd on 2018. I will introduce him more formally when he's able to be with us.
Councillor Verbeke?
We're the mayor, thanks. I guess it was last Wednesday, witnessed, most of us were there, witnessed a, something that is not going to happen now for another 20 years in our marina, the flipping of a coast guard boat, and it, I have it on video. It was great, kind of mixed up where people were supposed to gather, but I saw it, if you want to see it, I have it, but it was, it was great to be, it was great to be there to see what a local company out of, are they still in Chatham County, are they in Leamington?
They're in Leamington.
Okay, local company in Hike Metal did, so it was great to be there, thanks.
Okay, unfortunately, I've got a whole bunch to cover, and I'll try to go through it as quick as I can. On June 12th to the 15th, I attended the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence Seaway Cities Initiative, the mayor's conference, and while we keep going over the main concepts that we have, the three focused resolutions we are putting forward, we're building resilient Great Lakes and St. Lawrence cities and towns, I can't even read my writing, oh, so to protect the drinking water, to control the wastewater, and to also control stormwater and the effects that all of that has on each of our communities who benefit from the Great Lakes waters, really just saying to our federal governments, both Canadian and the United States financing, you guys have to keep coming to the table with more and more. The Asian carp issue and other aquatic invasive species that are dumped into our St. Lawrence Seaway and into the Great Lakes by the ships that come in, and also closing off the access to the Great Lakes coming up from the southern states, and keep working on that, that's going to be the American side of things, but it's huge, the amount of money they're going to have to come up with. And then addressing the nutrient pollution, which we are all very familiar with in regard to algal blooms, and saying that Ontario, Michigan, and Ohio governments must commit to the 40% reduction phosphorus input by 2025. So that was our main focus. We were in Ajax, Ontario, Mayor Steve Parish was an absolute wonderful host, he had a great team there guiding us all around wherever we had to be. John Dickert, who is the former mayor of Racine, is the new president and CEO of the Great Lakes Group. Keynote speakers included a gentleman by the name of Dan Egan, a former media guru, and he wrote this book, Death and Life of the Great Lakes. So he's been around and studying this for a very, very long time, and I'm more than happy to let you borrow it if you want to read that. We touched on coastal resilience and shoreline protection, the municipalities, and our legal responsibilities, all that kind of stuff. So it was really a heavy-duty conference, very well attended, and I can tell you that the mayor of Niagara Falls, New York, clearly expressed, the mayors of the United States that were there, clearly expressed their displeasure with the trade war tariffs that we are getting into with the current president over there. And on every occasion, when an American was near one of us Canadians, they just apologized for the things that were being said and the things that were being done. So very, very, very interesting conference from that respect. As we all know, the Leamington Fair just wound up, and Leamington was very, very lucky to have Tammy and her volunteers get the RCMP musical ride here, that was really, really cool to see, I've never seen it live before, so kudos to them. And as councillor Verbeke just mentioned, the Hike Metal rollover of their $7 million boat that they built for the Canadian Coast Guard, that one's going out to the west coast, right, to Vancouver, somewhere out there. And I think they've got more orders, I think, up to six more to do, so pretty fascinating when you consider the amount of technology that comes out of this little southern area. So quite proud of their efforts. On the 21st, I attended, well, I guess on the county level, the annual general meeting of Tweeki, councillor Dunn also attended. I was there for the actual voting meeting session, got to have my salad, but had to leave to get back to Leamington the same day because it was National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Poitiers National Park was unveiling the new welcoming sign, so the Caldwell First Nations and their representatives were all there. Really great presentation throughout the day, and I was very pleased to be greeted from the municipality to that. On a sad note, and why I'm kind of speaking a little quicker than usual tonight, Leamington has lost one of its longtime, extremely well-known characters in Peter Verrakis, owner of Tropicana, and I believe his visitation is tonight and only tonight, and I think the funeral tomorrow, I didn't see that, I just saw it tonight, okay. Well, that's good, so if you can get there, great. And then on happy news, something that the CAO and I have been sitting on for a few days, although the staff has definitely been working extremely hard through the weekend trying to organize all the details, it has been announced, somewhat formally, that Prime Minister Trudeau will be in Leamington on July 1st at the Highbury-Cancoe Plant. We will be closing off the road, Erie Street South, between Oak and Morgan, roughly between 11:30 and 1:30, 9:30?
Nine and three.
Nine and three, wow, extend it even further. We don't have any real significant details yet, we're waiting for the PM's office to come up with that, I expect we'll probably get it that day, but just to let the public know, it's out in the news media, and so, yeah, Leamington, little old Leamington, getting the prime minister to come here, nowhere else in the county, just saying. So mark it in your calendars and be ready to attend. Other than that, that's me. Statement members non-debatable? Councillor Wilkinson?
On that note, maybe you can invite the PM down to the Leamington Arts Center, Art at the Marina that day? Yeah, that'd bring in some great numbers for us. That is our biggest fundraiser of the year by far, and it's one of my favorite weekends here in Leamington, gonna be a busy weekend, but yeah, please make it out to the Leamington Arts at the Marina, thank you.
Mr. Neufeld?
Well, this weekend is going to be a big weekend, on top of Arts at the Marina, on Saturday evening will be the birthday party for the centennial of Poitiers National Park, there will be cake. This will be at Seacliff Park, when the Windsor Symphony will be playing a free and open concert for everyone at our new amphitheatre, so I would encourage everybody to come. The Windsor Symphony has a particular program that they play, an Old Canada program, where we'll hear things like the Hockey Night in Canada theme song and other very recognizable music. It's an opportunity for the Windsor Symphony to expand their network and to get people who normally wouldn't hear the symphony an opportunity to come, to come and sit on the hill and the symphony in the evening. That is also then followed the next day by another concert and our fireworks. Fireworks will follow immediately, currently planned to be sent off of the barge again, which will allow people at the concert to move down to the beach if they so choose, they can stay on the hill, the fireworks will be visible from the hill. Or, and this is the other part, at 5 o'clock on Saturday afternoon, our Leamington pedestrian pier will be opened. The Public Works Department especially has been working very diligently on getting this area ready. One of the two decks has been completed, wooden decks out there, there will be tables and chairs, and we encourage people to bring their lawn chairs as well because it will also be a great place to watch the fireworks from our new pedestrian pier. So there are a lot of things that are going to be happening this weekend, and very much looking forward to it.
Right. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Councillor Jacobs, councillor Dunn, all in favor? And carried.